All right, so I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, February 8th order. Our first order of business is to receive a presentation from the Chairman of the Advisory Committee on Sustainability, Craig Flaherty. Craig, are you with us?
Can you see me now?
Great, welcome.
Thank you very much. Nice to be here. I am also here, I think, with Carolyn Bain, although I don't see her name up on the screen yet. She's a very important component of the Sustainability Committee, although I'm the figurehead. She, her diligence and dedication cannot be ignored, and I can't say more good things about it. But since we have a limited amount of time, I will get going. We wanted to bring to you officially two recommendations for your consideration. The first recommendation is that the town sign on to the Connecticut Coalition for Sustainable Materials Management. And they have a lot of information on their website, and there's a simple statement I can, well, it's not really a simple statement, but there's a statement that you should have in your packets. The CCSMM is concerned about our ability to take care of our own waste. Right now, we're sending a quarter of our waste to other states. Landfills continue to fill up regionally. It is a risk exposure to the state of Connecticut because fees for that transport can go up out of our control, and those landfills can be completed or restricted from our use. So right now, everything feels good, but this is a problem we have to solve in the future. So the idea behind CCSMM, it is simply a coalition of towns, and I think there's 70 or 80 towns already signed on. They've been active for about a year. It's a non-binding sign-on, and it is simply for cooperation and idea sharing and trying to all be working on a solution to our waste problems together. So we have been attending their meetings, and we, Carolyn, even presented our food scrap recycling program to their increased recycling working group in October. And one of their primary findings from the first year of operation was the necessity to increase food scrap recycling, and I think maybe we had a part of that. So that's really the first, the first recommendation, is that we sign on to that. You're muted, Jamie.
Carolyn is here, too, so.
Hi, Carolyn.
Sorry, I was waiting to be entered into the wrong meeting.
Seems to be a popular situation tonight. You're not the only one. Did you have anything to add, or you probably didn't hear all of it?
I didn't hear what you said, but we talked a few minutes ago, and it sounded like we were on the same page in terms of why we feel that, you know, we need to be collaborating with some of the other municipalities. We can learn from them, and they can learn from us, and that's a good thing.
So I've had the benefit of listening to presentations from this group, and I do support all of their work. Some really interesting and important initiatives coming forward. I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about whether there is specific legislation that's being proposed or advocated this year by the coalition that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of that, Carolyn. Are you aware of that?
Well, there is the one bill that I thought we were going to talk about that has to do with creating a stewardship program for three materials that are really, really difficult to recycle or get rid of, and that's House Bill 6386. It's an act concerning extended producer responsibility for tires, smoke detectors, and certain gas cylinders. And the way the bill has been drafted, it set up the EPR framework for gas cylinders, but just opened the possibility of doing the same thing for tires and smoke detectors, which we currently accept at our recycling center, and we pay quite a bit to do so. The gas cylinders, especially the small ones, they're, we've had inquiries as to how to properly recycle or get rid of these, and we've done extensive research on this. There is no way to get rid of them, and so we don't know how to advise people. So this is something that we are interested in.
Terrific, thank you.
Yeah, that goes to the second item that we were going to recommend to you, which is helping CCSMM advocate for this bill to become law.
Okay. I guess I will open it up first to board questions about this particular initiative. Is there? No, nothing?
Thank you for your thoughts.
There are other initiatives that I think they are hoping to move forward. One, I think, that is important is getting, you know, front-end manufacturers to take responsibility for some of the waste that they're creating. I don't know exactly in what form that will take, but that is interesting to me. And the one I also like to try and follow is the idea of sort of pay-to-throw. I'm sure there's better industry lingo on that. Basically, you pay per bag to throw your waste away, and, you know, those are things that certainly change relationships between homeowners and haulers. So I'd like to make sure that we keep close tabs on initiatives like that. But in general, I'm very supportive of the work of this coalition.
Yeah, I think it's certainly, being a part of the coalition, it's going to be easier to keep tabs on these things. You know, I think there's a lot of, it's, it's, it's working in other states. Vermont uses a system, a pay-as-you-throw system. But there's a lot of questions that have to be answered on implementation and how it might actually work in our state and in our town.
Okay.
So very, yeah, very specifically on the, just to be clear as to why we're here, on the stewardship program for these fuel canisters and for the tires and for the smoke detectors, we are recommending that the town of Darien make a $2,500 contribution that will help employ the HRA, the Usatonic Resources Recovery Authority, hire a consultant to see that this bill actually passes, or to help lobby for this bill to actually pass.
So that's an interesting thing, Craig. Well, I guess first I'd like to ask for board questions about joining the coalition, and then to, you know, ask a clarifying question about whether the contribution itself is a contribution to the coalition, or are we paying for lobbyists? That's not something that we typically do as a municipality, is pay for lobbyists. So I see Kristy with a hand up.
Thank you very much, Craig. Could you just elaborate a little bit more as to the difference between the relationship you currently have with CCSM versus Darien being a recognized member? How does that change your relationship? Clearly, you're very involved, and it sounds wonderful. By no means am I trying to dissuade that taking the next step. I've just, I'm not clear as to how would it change when we are part of it?
There, there might not be a lot of perceived change. It basically goes from an unofficial standing to an official standing. I think it just helps us put support behind the group, right? There's strength in numbers, number one. We've put Darien out there as a sustainable community. You know, we've got the fact that we achieved bronze-level status on the front page of our website, and this is really a group about trying to solve these problems. And we think it makes sense, and it looks good, and we want to be a part of it.
And then who is the organizing structure of it? I'm sorry, how is it, are these all volunteer? Can you tell me a little bit more, I'm sorry, about how it's structured?
Sure. Carolyn, you want to take that?
So are you asking specifically about CCSMM?
Correct, correct.
So it was, it's a voluntary effort by municipalities to join. It's just a coalition of municipalities wanting to be more sustainable, and, as I mentioned earlier, to learn from each other and to sort of share best practices, and also just to sort of, you know, you know, create sort of a, it's sort of a, you know, to create also like a united front that, that we all want certain things. And Jamie had mentioned one of the items that came up when the municipalities that are participating were polled, there were four main areas where municipalities expressed interest in wanting some, something to be done. One of those was increased recycling. One was extended producer responsibility for a greater number of materials. Another one was opportunities to recycle food scraps and other organics, and then the unit-based pricing. So around those four issues, a number of working groups convened to talk about it, and also sort of like, you know, experts or people who had experience in the field came in to talk, and again, sort of to share best practices. So really, it's just, it's sort of an informal coalition of municipalities who want to sort of make some headway in terms of reducing Connecticut's solid waste and also minimizing the impact on taxpayers and municipalities, like with some of the extended producer responsibility programs. You know, you know, having that, the producers, you know, be more responsible for the end life of their products as opposed to just producing it and throwing it out there and, you know, not really having any responsibility for what happens to it, and then municipalities and consumers are responsible for it. So.
Okay, maybe perhaps, I'll rephrase it, is it that each municipality's sustainability committee sits on or participates? How are we represented? Are you our representatives? And I'm trying to get more of the structure of the organization and how initiatives move forward or prioritize.
It's really, it really varies because in some cities and in other municipalities, there is, you know, like a recycling coordinator position. So in, so a lot of municipalities are represented by paid employees. Others, like us, are represented by volunteers. Um, you know, I've seen a lot of, like, public works directors attending some of these meetings, so it really is a hodgepodge.
And the DEEP is kind of involved as a little bit of a linchpin to guiding this. The DEEP Commissioner is, is one of the co-chairs.
Yes.
And the town of Darien has received an official invitation from Commissioner Dykes to become a member of the coalition, which came to me, and then that responsibility would be appropriately delegated to our Sustainability Committee.
Okay. Now, that sounds, that sounds wonderful. I just wanted to better understand the structure, the agenda, how this moves forward, our participation from whole, well, the town would be the representative, but thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
So Craig, just to clarify, you said it's a non-binding agreement to join the coalition.
That's correct.
Is there a financial responsibility with that? I perceive that this Product Stewardship Institute proposal is separate and distinct from that, but.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So as a board, we can, we can get a sense of the board if they support the town joining the coalition. I think that's the first order of business. So I absolutely support it. I see Kip with a hand raised.
Just a question, where is the expertise coming from to solve these various problems?
Through the DEEP and the coalition itself.
Well, and also, like, for example, different towns have different programs where the representatives can lend their expertise. So for example, Stonington has a unit-based pricing, a pay-as-you-throw program, which I believe they said they instituted some 25-plus years ago. So, so different members talk about, like, I talked about our food scrap recycling program to one of the working groups. So different municipalities have some programs that others don't, so they, they share their experience of how they started their program, how it's been, issues that they may have had, benefits that may have been derived from the program, and so forth.
Okay, so there's no, there's no hired consulting firm that's guiding all of this?
No, no. The Commissioner, the DEEP Commissioner is sort of the, it's sort of under, under the auspices of that department, and, you know, they, sometimes there have been, I'm trying to think now, like, there have been different people, some of them from outside the state, who have presented at some of the working groups, but I believe it's all just a volunteer effort. I don't believe anyone's been paid.
Okay.
Any other board questions about the idea of joining the coalition? So we don't have an action item on our agenda, but I would like to call for a motion to approve the town of Darien joining the Connecticut Coalition on Sustainable Materials Management.
So.
Okay, Kip, seconds. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you for all of your work.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. So we have that out of the way. The second part of your, your ask was for a $2,500 donation for the efforts of the Product Stewardship Institute to move forward House Bill 6386.
That's correct.
And I have, I have, you know, certainly want to understand why there's such a significant financial outlay requested from coalition members. And as I said.
We got this, we got to this kind of a different way. So this didn't come down from CCSMM. This, this, we were tracking this for about a year.
Over a year.
Yeah, over a year. It became a pet peeve of ours because we got a question via our Facebook page that said, hey, I've got this one-pound Coleman camping container that used to have propane into it. How do I, how do, where do I put it at the dump? Where do I, how do I get rid of it? And literally, there is no way to properly dispose of that item. It doesn't belong in a single stream. It doesn't belong in scrap metal. It doesn't belong in the waste hopper. Nobody wants this thing that could potentially explode in their.
Or household hazardous waste either.
And, yeah, you can't, it's not hazardous waste either. Really, how folks, we went so far as to figure out how other people are dealing with it. The National Park Service has this huge budget just to deal with these things left behind. And these aren't for camp, just for campers. They, they go in torches that contractors use, and it's not just the one-pound Coleman container. It's all sorts of different sizes in the small fuel canister pressurized category. Since we, so Norwalk accepts them, and although you can buy them for $4 at Walmart, Norwalk actually pays $5 to have each one emptied in a safe environment, cut in half, and then place the steel receptacle in with recycling. We don't even offer a place for people to dispose of these things, which kind of, when you don't provide the right place, right, invariably, it is ending up in the wrong place. And so you can imagine one of these containers in our waste hopper when the piston goes to crush the waste that's in there, and, you know, we could have a fire explosion on our hands, because people will dispose of it even if it's not the right thing to do. So we've been looking for a solution for this, and lo and behold, as we were writing our own white paper to lobby for a stewardship program, we found out that people were already ahead of us on this. And so the HRA, which is the Usatonic Resources Recovery Authority, had been looking into it, and they're the ones that proposed hiring or helping the Product Stewardship Institute, which is a 501(c)(3), try to get this bill passed. This is what the Product Stewardship Institute does. They do it all over the place, and so they have the right experts to understand the language in the bill, to understand, to answer the questions about why certain language makes sense or how, how to get these things done, because they monitor these things really all around the country. They're based in Boston. So, and originally, we were concerned that since the town of Darien doesn't actually pay to manage these canisters, there is no clear return on investment other than maybe the reduction in risk of things being put in the wrong place. But it turned out that we understand they're trying to add to this bill, or they have some language in there already that needs to be improved as a placeholder, tires and smoke detectors. So currently, the town of Darien pays about $1,875 a year to get rid of smoke detectors, and we pay about $1,800 a year to get rid of tires. So should this bill pass, that's $3,700, we would see a return on investment in year one. But that's a, should this bill pass, there will be a return on investment in year one. We can't promise that, but that would be the hope.
So just a couple of things from my perspective, and then I will open it up to board comments or questions. In my history, we've never paid for outside, you know, lobbyists for any bill. We, as groups, as boards or commissions, as individuals, through our legislators, you know, we kind of do that work on our own. We testify up in Hartford in support of, as individuals and groups. So I feel that paying for a lobbyist sets a precedent that I'm not sure that the town wants to begin. I haven't read that bill, so I'd really like to read the bill itself to understand it better. Conceptually, what you've described sounds great, but I need to see the language in order to know whether it's something that we should support in whole or in part.
Yeah, sure. Just so you know, the, the language for the canisters is representative of creating the stewardship program. The language for the tires and smoke detectors was really just kind of thrown in as a placeholder, and it still needs to be revised to reflect that.
Yeah, the only other thing that I wanted to say, Jamie, is that the Product Stewardship Institute is, they're not, they do help us lobby a bit, but that isn't really the way to look at them, because they're actually, so this, this bill really came out of the Connecticut Product Stewardship Council, of which Jennifer Heaton-Jones, who is the Executive Director of the Usatonic Resources Recovery Authority, is the chairman. That's sort of the connection there. So the Product Stewardship Institute really helped with doing research, with bringing, conducting meetings among all the interested people who are interested in seeing this bill become a reality. They brought some of the stakeholders to the table, you know, from the industry, and they, they, they provide resources and, and helped craft the bill. So I don't know how much, how much effort they'll really be putting into in, in terms of steering it through the legislative process. Most of their work-heavy lifting was done on the earlier end. So they're really more like a consultant than they are a lobbyist. And I also just wanted to say that they are also the organization that was responsible for the successful passage of stewardship programs for electronics, mattresses, and paint. So those are three programs where, you know, we have benefited mightily, especially from, you know, the mattresses and the paint stewardship programs.
And the paint stewardship, when that came into being, we immediately saw something on the order of a $15,000 reduction in our hazardous, household hazardous waste day costs.
So as I said, I, I don't object at all to the goals and objectives of, of the coalition or the stewardship institute. I'm just trying to nuance whether we feel comfortable contributing money for that effort. So I'll be quiet now, and I'd like to open it up for board comments or questions. Krista?
Yeah, I share your concerns, Jamie, but Craig or Carolyn, can you give us a sense of timing on this? Is this something, because this is sort of coming out, we don't have documentation to address what you have mentioned right now. Is this something we could address on the 22nd, or can you give us a feel for that?
Um, go ahead, Craig.
Yeah, I mean, if you need to take some time to, to understand a little bit more, it doesn't have to, it doesn't require action tonight.
Personally, I am concerned about the financial contribution, and I would like to read the bill. So those are two things that come to mind immediately.
Okay, other board comments or questions? Sarah?
Great. I think we support the idea. I think it's just a matter of looking into more, given the financial base, we usually look over anything before we vote on any kind of financial contribution.
Kip, David?
I'd like to read the bill.
David, any comments, questions?
Nope.
Okay. Well, thank you. This is great information. I'm really very happy that the town will be engaged more fully in the coalition. That's great news. Please send us whatever you have in terms of draft bill language, and we will make sure that we get, you know, your, your ask for funding on a future Board of Selectmen agenda.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, first Selectmen's report. Governor Lamont announced today the expansion of the COVID-19 vaccine eligibility. Anyone 65 to 74 years old are eligible to schedule an appointment for vaccine beginning Thursday, February 11th. There are 350,000 Connecticut residents who are 65 to 74. The governor anticipates it will take about a month to vaccinate everyone in that age category. Books 75 and over and anyone eligible under Phase 1A who has not already been vaccinated and wants to should register as soon as possible. All eligible Connecticut residents, including anyone 65 and over, can call the Darien Health and Human Services Department at 203-656-7328 to schedule for a Darien Vaccine Clinic. You may also register for other vaccine sites by registering on the state's Vaccine Management System website, which is www.dphsubmissions.ct.gov/onlinevaccine. Or you can call the state's central phone line at 877-918-2224. The legislative session is well underway. The best source of information on proposed legislation and public hearings can be found on General Assembly's website at www.cga.ct.gov. I'll tell you, it's not easy to follow the bills. So we'll make sure that we try and get information out or ask our representatives to provide information to the Darien public about bills. information to the Darien public about bills that are noteworthy. All public hearings this year are being held virtually. Should you wish to testify on a particular bill, information has been posted on the town website, giving instructions on how to do so under the "How Do I?" tab. Your voice in town government, in government policymaking is critical. As always, there are policies being proposed that may affect you and your family. I encourage you to visit the state website to learn about current proposals. If you have questions or concerns, please reach out to our House and Senate Representatives, Senator Bob Duff, and Representatives Terry Wood and Matt Blumenthal. We're adding easy links under the government tab on the town website, where you can access our state and federal representatives' contact information and their websites. They often post updated information about timely legislation, so make sure that you have that at your fingertips. Currently, proposed legislation is being debated in the committees of cognizance. This is where the public hearings will occur. Only bills voted out of committee will be debated by the House and Senate for potential ratification. So basically, there's several thousand bills that have been proposed right now in committees, and that committee process will churn out probably a couple hundred bills that will then go to the floors of the House and Senate for debate. A number of notable bills have been introduced, including, but not limited to: legalizing the sale and use of recreational marijuana, online sports betting, public auction healthcare, which has a public hearing tomorrow, I just heard, statewide property tax on commercial and residential property, raising the income and/or the capital gains tax, support for the expansion of broadband services, fines for not voting, modifying the state's payment in lieu of tax system to become a tiered system based on municipalities' need, and the creation of statewide zoning regulations designed to increase housing density around commercial centers and transit stations without public hearings. I encourage our representatives to keep us all updated on this legislation that will undoubtedly impact us and our families. Thank you. Kate?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Then we'll turn to board liaison reports. Any reports for this evening? Sarah, is that a hand up, or no?
Yep. Sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. The Thriving Youth Task Force has an update. The last Thriving Youth Task Force meeting was on January 19th. The group discussed the community asset survey that is done triannually, that the Darien Public Schools will be helping to administer on behalf of the Community Fund. The data will be available to the town in a few months. The Thriving Youth Task Force is holding a book group right now to discuss the book, A Beautiful Boy. This discussion is to go along with a speaker that is this week. Chris Heron will be speaking this Wednesday, February 10th, at 7:00 p.m. And the Thriving Youth Task Force is sponsoring this event with many other groups in town. Chris previously spoke to Darien students and parents a few years ago with some great feedbacks. We hope you can join and listen to him. The youth asset team also spoke to the Thriving Youth Task Force about the recent activities. The Thriving Youth Task Force then split into two groups. There are two initiatives that they are looking to implement. One is a virtual calming corner with activities and ideas meant to engage children in town. And the second is ways to create meaningful social engagement opportunities for youth and teens in town. The goals are to give our children new coping skills, to have a new emotional toolbox. The next meeting of the task force will be on March 18th. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much, Sarah. Chris Heron's awesome, so if you have an opportunity to tune into that, I recommend it.
Absolutely.
Kip?
I'll read my report. It's been given to Kate in a written format, so it will be attached to the minutes, right, Kate? So my report is as follows. At our meeting on January 29th, the Building Committee voted unanimously to approve the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to our contract with ONGAP Construction, joint venture. A brief summary of the GMP and the revised cost of the Ox Ridge project is as follows. The guaranteed cost of construction is now $50,820,000. This amount compares with the estimate on August 13th, which was prior to the subcontractor bidding process, of $55,529,000, or a reduction of $4,708,000, 8.48%. This price includes $542,000 for alternates that were approved by the committee, such as playground surface material and off-site soil storage, that were accepted by the committee, as well as $310,000 for allowances that may or may not be fully spent by the end of the project. The total project cost includes owner or soft costs, which are in addition to the amount in the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment. The August 13th estimate listed such soft costs as $8,738,000. And while we still need to obtain bids for furniture and fixtures, telephone systems and technology equipment, the current estimate for soft cost is $8,289,000. Therefore, our current estimate for the total cost of the project is $59,109,728, which, when compared to our budget established in June of 2019, before we designed anything, of $63 million, is $3,892,000, or 6.17% under that budget. It should be noted that this total cost estimate includes two contingency amounts: $1,429,000 for the contractor, included in the GMP contract amendment, and $2,545,000 for the town, 4.5% of the total project. The combined contingencies amounted to $3,974,000, or 6.7% of our total cost estimate. Finally, ONGAP currently estimates that about 93% of our expenditures will qualify as eligible expenditures for purposes of qualifying for state reimbursement. With our reimbursement rate of being 11.43%, that would mean about $6,283,000 of funds from the state if we spent the full $59 million. That's the report.
That's terrific. Thank you for that excellent detail and great work that obviously reflects lower costs than we had anticipated. Well done.
It was really due to the fact that the bidding, there were anxious bidders out there who wanted to get business, which is good. And I would say this, that the estimate that was put together by ONGAP for what we thought was going to be the case, the $55 million of construction costs, when you took the average bids of all of them, it was $55 million. So they were not, they didn't gundeck the estimates.
Great. And I think work has begun out there, correct, Kip? You want to tell us a little bit about what's going on?
Big hole in the ground. Lots of dirt, lots of dirt has been removed, about 20,000 cubic yards of dirt, and it's a mountain going out of there.
And how are things going with traffic flow and construction vehicles and interacting with the parents and kids arriving and leaving?
Well, it depends upon whom you ask, but according to Luke Fortschaw, the principal, it's been relatively well managed and well designed. In other words, the contractors did a lot of things in the parking lot to help alleviate the tension of the pickup and the delivery of children and the buses, so that it's working fairly smoothly, given the fact it's a very tight and constrained site.
Great. Thank you so much.
Oh, by the way, and our people that are doing the excavation were very nice to remove all the snow from the parking lots.
Ah.
They have the equipment, obviously.
That's very nice. Good for Mike Lynch.
We'll get the bill.
Okay. David, you have a blight report.
We're meeting this coming Wednesday, so next meeting, but on behalf of the Darien taxpayers, I'd like to take a minute to thank Kip and the folks on the Building Committee, because never in my wildest imagination did I expect us to be this far under the initial estimate.
We don't know. We're going to try and get even lower.
Thank you, Kip.
Thanks so much. Okay, then we'll move on to new business. We have to take up a recommendation for a special appropriation to the RTM of COVID reopening expenditures.
Typically, you wouldn't address items, financial items for the Board of Ed, but the charter does say that if it's a special appropriation, it will be recommended by the Board of Selectmen to the RTM. So that's why it's coming before you, so that you can make the recommendation to the RTM.
It should be noted that the Board of Finance has already approved this.
Yes.
So it's really an administrative matter tonight, but I'm very happy to move this appropriation, so that the Board of Ed can receive their funding for the hard work that they've done to reopen our schools. So may I have a second? Sarah, seconds. Is there any further discussion on this?
Just one question.
Yes.
If they weren't going to do an appropriation, how else could they get this paid?
Contingency.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? All those in favor of a special appropriation of $1,788,130, please say aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. Discuss and take action on a request for a special appropriation for the purchase of concession equipment. We have a memo in our packet that the Parks and Rec Commission would like to be able to buy certain pieces of equipment that was previously owned or is currently owned by Uncle's Deli, and has a fair market value of $12,850. Kate, do you have anything else that you'd like to add to this?
No, I don't, but Pam Gary is here and available to answer questions if you have them.
Where's Pam? Oh, there's Pam. Hello. Good evening, Pam. Okay, so board questions for Pam about this appropriation? No board questions? No. So to add a little more color, so the fair market value of the equipment that you hope to be purchasing is $12,850, but you have come to an agreement with Uncle's Deli that the cost for that equipment would be $9,200. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And can you give us more detail for the public's benefit on what you hope to be buying from Uncle's Deli?
Sure. I can actually go down the list of equipment. Weed Beach, there's a tabletop flame grill, there's a tabletop flat top griddle, there's a five-foot sandwich prep station, under counter, one-door fridge, electric hot dog roller, two deep fryer litters, two flavor frozen drink machine, an ice maker, a brand-new popcorn maker, a three-door freezer, and a two-door refrigerator, that's at Weed Beach, and a pair of tree, a one-door freezer, a one-door refrigerator, deep fryer later, a four-foot sandwich prep, ice maker, griddle, and a pizza oven.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Krista?
Thank you, Pam. Could you talk a little bit about how the purchase of this equipment fits into the consultant's report, who did a report on food services at our beaches? Does this match what was recommended? Can you just briefly talk about that?
That was my question.
Sure. I would say that this goes along with his recommendations. I mean, he had a few different things on his list, but that's certainly something we can incorporate at a later time, and it wasn't very expensive equipment. But, you know, we're looking for a variety, and I think with this standard equipment, that any vendor that comes in can certainly bring a new flair to their own menu as well, and we're hoping that we see this when they bid.
Thank you.
I also see that Lori Bora is on the call tonight, so Lori's welcome to join in this Other board questions for Pam or Lori?
Just out of curiosity, Pam, are you still on schedule to do the tours tomorrow with potential interested parties?
Yes, I am.
Good luck.
We did have a phone call today asking if we would still be having the walkthrough despite the weather conditions, and that's a yes.
That's a good sign.
It is a good sign.
Get used to snow.
And confirming that the Park and Rec Commission has also approved of this purchase that is being recommended to us, just to clarify?
Yes. But I will give them further detail on Wednesday night as to how many approvals that I'll need, and they'll also be involved with the bidding. When we, one of the commission members will meet with me when we open the bid, and then we will report back to the commission on how many bids came in. So they'll be involved in the process.
No, I'm sorry, clarifying the purchase of the equipment.
Yes.
So the commission has approved this purchase for recommendation?
Yeah, the commission, yes, Krista, the commission's on board.
Perfect. Thank you.
So I see that the useful life of the specific equipment you want to purchase is between two and eight years remaining. Can you tell us if you feel as though you've budgeted enough in your budget for the maintenance of this pre-owned equipment? Or will there be a maintenance contract of some kind that you enter into?
Jamie, that's the, the equipment is two to eight years old currently and has a lifespan of 15 years typically.
Oh, I read that in a different way, so thank you for that clarification.
So it has a remaining life of either 13 years or seven years, 13, seven to 13 years.
Right. But I think Pam was making the point in her memo that this equipment does not get used 12 months out of the year?
Correct.
So we actually should get a longer life out of it than the 15 years.
So I just want to, this is an important point. This memo says that according to, I think Pam, research shows that well-maintained commercial equipment has a lifespan of 15-plus years, and this equipment ranging from two to eight years old. So what is the useful life of this particular equipment that you are purchasing?
Well, this has been well-maintained. I did meet with the company that maintains it annually, BTU Systems, and they, you know, came back saying that it's been well-maintained, so therefore they feel that we can get a, you know, anywhere from, you know, eight years to longer out of the equipment.
Okay.
But they did recommend, and I did ask them, if we were to have some money to purchase, what would they recommend for us to buy? And he did put a recommendation in there that Weed Beach most likely would want to replace the two-door fridge and the three-door freezer and the new Bain Marie, which is a prep station, at some point. But he feels that it's in decent condition right now, it's been well-maintained over the years, but it's something that, down the road, we should be looking at that. So we would, you know, in a few years, we'll be budgeting for one item, and then another year, maybe another item.
But hopefully not within the next five years, is what I'm hearing you confirm tonight?
That's hopeful, yes. I do, yes.
Krista?
All right. Could you talk a little bit about how you arrived at $9,200 for this equipment?
Sure. I went back and forth with Rob about, who's the owner of Uncle's Deli, about the age of the equipment, and I couldn't, he couldn't pinpoint right away, so I basically came back and said, if you can't pinpoint all the equipment... then will you settle for, you know, going in at $9,200? I basically piecemealed it out. I did my research about what it was brand-new and what the range was for used equipment. And he feels it's a turnkey operation, and he was happy to come down to $9,200.
And Pam, the amount, the amount that's in the budget for maintenance, you spoke with BTU before you settled on that amount, right?
Yes.
So that was effectively with their guidance?
Are you talking about the $8,000?
Yeah, the $8,000 for the maintenance expense?
Yeah, no, I did not with BTU, because that was prior, we put that number in prior to me meeting with BTU. So that number was, you know, I tried to look at the best-case scenario if something were to go down or something needed to be maintained or purchased for the first summer, that we'd be able to do so, we'd be, we'd have enough money there. You know, in the best-case scenario, we won't use any of those dollars, you know, to purchase anything, but we do know at least $3,000 for annual maintenance at both facilities.
An annual maintenance is kind of, is it a mix determination? Is it cleaning also, you know, a season-end cleaning?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So it's a startup and it's finishing at the end of the season. So all the refrigerators and freezers have to get checked out before they're turned off for the season. And then in the beginning of the season, BTU comes in, does a complete haulover check on all of the equipment to make sure it's up and running before the season opens.
Okay. Other board questions? No, okay, then I will, this requires a vote, right, Kate? I'll entertain a motion to approve an expenditure of $9,200 to purchase pre-owned concession equipment from Uncle's Deli.
Do you actually want to recommend the special appropriation?
Sorry, special appropriation.
I see Sarah.
Sarah moves. May I have a second?
Second.
Kip, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, great. Thank you so much, Pam and Lori. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
All right, discuss and take action on a proposed mission statement for a newly-to-be-convened IT steering committee. This was the first necessary recommendation to come out of our IT assessment. So Kate, I'll let you take this.
So the way I put this together was I looked at the report from the consultants, and then I started searching for mission statements for other such committees. I Googled it, and I actually found a lot of good things. And then I took a look at, you know, all the things I was finding and tried to put it into what I thought was important for the town and different things that I had heard being said. I did try and prioritize, and I duplicated one of them. It's not that I thought that was more important than anything else. And then the makeup of the committee took a look again at what our consultant had recommended in terms of staff involvement. And and then I just felt that it would be good to have a member of your board, a member of the Board of Finance. I know the RTM is interested in it, so remember the RTM, and then thought you might want some members of the public. So it's a starting point for you, and I'm happy to take edits.
More questions, Kip?
Okay, yeah, I saw your double, double entry. That's fine, let's get rid of that. But on the line that begins, the committee will focus its efforts, about a third from the bottom. And it says, "on ensuring consistent and deliberate progress," okay? Small board issue, but until we get to the substances, I would do "on" one paren, "ensuring blah, 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 governance processes." Semicolon, "to," semicolon, paren, and then get down, and three paren. Now, the last paren, "ensuring that decision-making occurs at the right levels regarding IT goals, policies, standards, and priorities and investments." Okay, totally agree. How are you going to manage that? How are you going to ensure that decision-making, decision-making occurs at those levels?
Well, I think what I was hoping to avoid was decision-making happening at a department level without involvement of the IT, the steering committee. And honestly, you know, that's got to, I'd say, come in two ways. If it's a staff member, you know, there can be consequences and evaluations, but I think it has to be also at the board level dealing with budget issues.
Okay, I mean, this is a complex, I agree, it's a very important, it's a very important part of this, of this IT goals. And I just want to make sure that it's clear enough for all of us, we read that, that it stands the test of time. And I hear what you're, you're coming from the point of view, let's make sure it doesn't happen at the lowest level.
Yeah, one of the most important, one of the most important things I think would, that has to come out of all this is that IT decisions don't come directly from a department to the Board of Selectment. If the steering committee doesn't bless it, it shouldn't happen.
So a small edit to say that, to be a little bit more specific and in the language could be that you say, "and ensuring that decision-making occurs with the concurrence of the steering committee and the Board of Selectment."
That might do it.
I was going to add language similar to that with the word jointly, so, but I think that makes sense. Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, clearly you anticipate that many of the IT issues, program specifics, will be, will, will come from departments because they have a specific need, but obviously what you want to make sure is that the advisory committee as a whole sees this entire process and makes sure that they evaluate it and it fits in within the whole structure of what they're trying to get done.
Right, and, you know, want to see, make sure that the decisions all get the proper attention that we don't have somebody planning to upgrade their software when their server is not capable of managing that. That upgrades are not just done in a vacuum, that they are evaluated beyond just the department level.
Well, I think, I thought you addressed that in the next graph where you said the committee will review and make recommendations to the Board of Selectment, so I think it's an important point, but you have it there. I like that graph. I agree with Kip's edits. I thought that that should be the lead. To me, that's the focus. That really is the statement as to what this body will do or should do. I would lead with that and move it up to the top. I just thought, I mean, that's more of a document structure as opposed to at the bottom. And I have a couple of just general questions as to, about the, the committee. Well, I may start with that. Well, is it the understanding this committee will then be formed forever? And if so, because our IT needs will, I'm a little confused on that part.
It's an advisory committee, Krista, so they are authorized annually. So they can continue to operate as long as the Board of Selectment approves their continued operation.
So as long as somebody's buying, has a request for technology, this committee needs to exist based upon this.
You could think about Senator TB79, who is also an advisory committee.
Krista, this will go on forever?
Right, right, there's no end in this, so I just.
There's no end to technology improvements. It'll, it is massively, it's coming at us like a tidal wave, and it's not going to change. It's probably one of the more important things we can talk about doing this year.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to, it's beyond just developing a five-year plan. That's one of the goals of this committee. Then, okay, I have more questions regarding the committee, but I don't want to take the conversation in one direction if there's other areas. As far as the members, did we want to elaborate more as to the skill sets we're looking for from those individuals? And what is the mechanism for them, these individuals, to be replaced?
Well, if it's an advisory board, to the Board of Selectment, it's your typical, you interview them. You know, I don't think you usually put the skills that you want in something like this, but, yeah.
I would say, I would say that there are three members of the public at large who we have an opportunity to guide with some skills parameters when we select those three individuals. The rest of the people on the committee, there's either only one of them, like Kate, or they come from a board or a body who will appoint that individual. And it would be my hope that that board or body would appoint an individual who has a vested interest in this issue and maybe some professional knowledge on the top.
It was more directly related to the people at large, as the other ones are coming from specific departments. I didn't know if that was helpful as we constitute this body and will continue to reconstitute, potentially reconstitute it. I didn't know if that was helpful. That's fine if it's left.
I would say that it would, it would be very helpful for those three members of the general public to have some technology experience.
Okay, yeah.
Sarah, did you have a comment?
No, I think I was just thinking along, I, you know, obviously there's, I think, one particular officer at the police department who seems to be.
Oh, yeah.
Obviously, I'm sure Chief would put him forward, so I would hope that he would be the representative.
I think he has a strong interest in doing that, Sarah.
Yeah.
And I'm hopeful that we have three technology professionals in town that would be happy to serve.
I'm sure we would.
We have them, David, but you're right. We hope they would serve.
So let this be our first casual outreach. Krista, did you have other questions?
I did. Unless that question may be a suggestion to incorporate this into the mission statement. I don't know if it would be helpful to refer back to the IT study so anyone looking at this document has perspective as to how, why it was formed. I just know in serving the brief time I did while the Parry Point Building Committee was meeting, I did refer frequently back to that document because it was very important to have a path as to what our charge was or wasn't. I just thought for context, it would be helpful to be, to have it mentioned here. And then in conjunction to that comment, would it be appropriate for the steering committee to be addressing the items referenced in the Blum Shapiro study? You know, we had many items mentioned. The creation of this committee certainly being one of them, but there were others. Is this, would that be added to the charge of this committee?
I would probably consider adding a more general statement that refers to the Blum Shapiro or any future studies and recommendations therein.
Right, to provide extra background.
Yeah, right. When you look at their recommendation on the IT steering committee, the first one was that it should be used to develop, promote, and pursue the completion of a three- to five-year strategic IT plan. So, you know, we have, we hit that. They talk about the plan should include the upcoming purchases and investments. You know, I think we, we hit on that. About it's to provide the mechanism by which technology investments programs and policies are vetted. The committee will be imperative in ensuring that IT purchases align with the strategic direction of the town, which is in here. That it should meet department, meet with each department annually during budget season to make an appropriate assessment and determination of needs and anticipated spending. Don't have it on an annual basis, but that they review the requests for technology and purchases. So I think we're hitting on the things that they have in there, but I'm happy to add more of that.
So I think one of the things that we found was that there seems to be some particular needs that stand out and were higher priorities. And it may be that, that might be flipped in the beginning where, you know, we meet with the departments first as far as the things that needed to be implemented, you know, first before the budget season. We obviously would need to get their input, but I also wonder if we should say that this committee, the steering committee should be updating the Board of Selectment on a, maybe every six months at least, if not more, for the first year these decisions are made. They will have some significant possibly financial implications.
So.
I don't know the right way to address that.
Yeah. I guess I'm thinking of this as a longer-term document. One that shouldn't have to be changed too much over the years as opposed to, I think definitely putting in something about how frequently they should be updating the Board of Selectmen, you know, maybe an annual in this document, but as they're formed, you give them a direction that, you know, you're going to want more frequent updates for the first 18 months or so.
Why don't you use the standard language of, at least annually or at the request of the Board of Selectmen? All advisory committees should be reporting to us annually. Anything else?
I'm excited for this. I'm excited to see the recommendations from this.
This is great. Does everyone feel comfortable voting on this tonight, or do you want to see a clean draft before we vote?
I think a clean draft would be helpful.
Does anyone feel under any pressure to approve this before our next Board of Selectment meeting? I think I'd like to see a clean draft and just think about it a little bit more and give us another, another chance to.
And if we have small edits, we can forward them to Kate. I mean, just small edits, you know.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The one thing that I did want to state publicly with regard to this proposal for forming a steering committee is the importance of the IT director on the steering committee because they will be the liaison to the Board of Education and the school administration. You know, we're inextricably connected given they are a department of the Board of Education, and I'm very cognizant of that. So having that individual be an active participant on the steering committee creates that important link. Okay, so we'll, we'll visit this again. We won't take a vote on it tonight. We'll visit it again in our next meeting. Thanks very much, Kate. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Let's see, we are now going to go into our discussion and action on the. Let's see. We are now going to go into our discussion and action on the recommendation of our budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
So I sent you out some updates on the open items this afternoon. Not all of them. So the first one was the concrete pad at the fire, the drill tower. I did not receive the specifications or the estimate that the drill, that the Fire Commission had received. But I do believe you should approve this. My recommendation would be to approve the funding as proposed. And if you want to put in the requirement that before it goes out to bid, it be reviewed by the Director of Public Works for potential inclusion with our sidewalk bid. And then we can see if there, you know, there may be savings.
Questions about that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, the next one, I approve that. I would like that added language. I'm sorry, just to clarify. I like that language, Kate. I think that's a great idea. Okay. The next open item you had was the replacement vehicle for the Fire Marshal. So they, as I said to you in the email, we don't write, we, we don't expect a second viable hand-me-down from the Police Department in the near future, in the near term. But in discussions with the Director of Public Works and he had discussed it with the maintenance, our fleet mechanic, what we're proposing is that we, we do still buy the new vehicle, but it not be for the Fire Marshal. It'd be for a department that has a greater need for, to replace their existing vehicle. Pass that existing vehicle down to the Fire Marshals for the, the part-time inspectors, because that's just local driving. That will save us $10,000.
Who gets the new vehicle?
The Park and Recreation Director.
I think that's smart. Any other comments or questions about that? We like taking the additional cut.
Yeah. So if you want to take additional cuts, I have one more for you that is not on your list. On Thursday of last week, we received our annual letter from Aquarian updating us on what the charges would be for the fire hydrants. So took that information with what they anticipate for rate increases or credits over the next, the next fiscal year. And did an analysis and it, what I've calculated is that we can cut the budget by $20,000.
That's significant.
Yes.
And an anomaly. It always gets up.
Normally it's the other direction.
Yes, but we are getting a new credit. So. And I read the numbers and I sent it over to Jen and I said, you know, what do you think? So we were both in agreement that that works.
Kate, that sounds fantastic. Where does that show up in the budget? Which department, that kind of thing?
If you go to Fire Marshal.
Yes.
Two expense codes under the Fire Marshal, one for Fire Marshal's office and then one for the hydrant.
Perfect, thank you.
Be going from 520 to 500. The last item I have for you tonight, I don't actually have a number, so we're going to have to give a gift to the Board of Finance, their first potential cut. But our IT Director called me this morning to tell me that they've been training on some new technology. And because of what they've, what they've now learned, they can replace the police fire service with this new technology at a significantly lower price. But he doesn't have an amount. He had an estimate, but I did not want to put that in without some solid pricing. I was reluctant to cut it too far and then have to go back. So we'll leave that for the Board of Finance to cut.
What's our number today?
The number today is 120,000.
Okay, just a reference.
Okay.
The other items you had open, they were not things that I could update you on. The Edgerton property, that's a discussion for you in the Historical Society. Grant was another item that you had open.
Yes, and I don't have any information for you, an update for the Historical Society grant. So we'll talk about that item along with the Edgerton. And I think we also have to talk about the $7,500 for the landscaping at the Fire Drill Tower. Are there any other items to discuss or members would like to discuss this evening?
Kate, I just want to make sure when I look at the, the changes. For some reason, I got confused. The language maybe was wrong, but whatever. We've always had the fire apparatus in our budget. We just decided, decided to make it a item for the bonding, right?
Well, the way you were all talking about it last week was you thought it's something that should be bonded, but you wanted to take it out of the budget specifically to force the issue with the Board of Finance.
Okay, so it was more of a maneuver. It wasn't a question. We didn't even have it in the budget recently. Okay.
Yeah.
So why don't we start with that, that comment? And get the sense of the board on your willingness to remove the reserve amount for the fire apparatus. And attempt to compel the Board of Finance to, to bond for the cost of the apparatus in the years that it's going to be ordered.
I would support that.
Me too.
All right.
Great, me too. Unanimous. Perfect, thank you. Okay, let's talk about the $7,500 for the landscaping work at the Fire Drill Tower. We forwarded you a series of emails, so you have the discussion that's been ensuing since our last budget workshop meeting. And I just want to say publicly for the folks that are watching who are part of the fire service that our objective was simply to find a more efficient way to get the same job done. You know, not looking to undermine in any way our volunteer fire service. So Kate, I wonder if you have any additional information from the Parks and Rec Department based on the very specific needs outlined by the Fire Commission?
I do not. I also had spoken to Director of Public Works. And Ed is also willing to do whatever, you know, whatever's asked of him in regards to, you know, by the Board of Selectmen in regards to this subject.
Comments or questions from the board?
Well, I have to recuse myself. I coached Alan Hyatt in hockey when he was a boy. I've worked with Alan for many years. He was captain, I think, of Norotin Fire Department at one time. And he's been a longstanding member of the community, so I'm going to recuse myself from this, this choice.
He's actually a past chief of Norotin.
That's why I said, I love that.
Krista?
I just want to clarify as much for the public that as we began this discussion as to whether or not these services could be done, I'll say in-house for lack of better words. It, this does not create an increase in any other town budget to have these services moved there. Can we clarify that or just confirm that?
Yes, and I informed the Fire Commission of that fact.
So this is purely a cut, not a movement of funds or even worst case, an increase in expense for any other town department, which we've addressed. Correct.
Sarah, David?
We are treating this item the way that we treat every other line item in every other department with an eye to maintaining service level. With also with an eye to penny pinch, if you will, for the Darien taxpayers. We simply posed the question of would it be possible and could it be done and could it save money for the, for the taxpayers? That was the purpose and the intent of the request. And it sounds like it, it is possible to do that.
Sarah, do you have a comment?
I appreciated the additional information from the Fire Commission. Like Kate, I have known Alan Hyatt for many years. And it was interesting to hear that he was providing the landscaping services. That was not listed in Open Gov. I'm sure it's not for several other departments and who's providing particular landscaping. So I don't know that, yeah, I just don't have a particular-
So I feel compelled to make a comment here. We don't, I would feel that no board member needs to recuse themselves from this decision. Because we don't make this decision based on who is providing the service. It happens to be someone we know, but the truth of the matter is that we, we actually all know all of the fire, volunteer firefighters in town. So just the simple fact that you know someone or have had a past relationship of one kind or another shouldn't be a reason why you, you would recuse yourself from making a financial decision on the project.
No, of course. I just was being transparent. I, I don't know that, you know, I didn't have a chance to go over to see the fire drill. Obviously now it's covered with snow. It's very difficult to see. I understand that there's some desire to have Alan's crew work, you know, with some of the deeper weeds. And it's not a conversation that we've, I guess, had with Parks and Rec. And I appreciate that they both and Ed have, you know, offered to do that work. I don't know that I have a particular opinion either way. If we can save somebody, fantastic. But if this is something that's important to the Fire Commission.
Krista?
Yeah, I do think it's important that we're taking, we're, we want to get caught up too much in the weeds literally, but I think we're really talking about process here, no pun intended. This is not about people. This is not about companies. This is just about procedure, in my opinion. And again, like David said, we look at this as if can we do this job in-house? I think we should be looking at that for everything we do. Can we do it? We want to work smart. We want to be looking out for our taxpayers at all time, delivering the best services. My suggestion would be to move forward with our discussion, but really to flag it and have a conversation across the year with the Fire Commission to see how it went. And if it didn't go so well, it could be revisited for next year. But I would be amenable to giving it a try for this year.
You know, if I could remind you, that was one of the things that Parks and Rec said, is that they were willing to try it for a year. So it's also not to see how it went from the perspective of the Fire Commission, but also how it went from the perspective of the town departments. This was not an unusual request on the part of the Board of Selectmen. I've seen it, you know, and here 20 years plus. Often we're asked, can this be done in-house? Can we do it cheaper in-house? This is one of those occasions where the departments, well, some of the departments were willing to say, yes, let's try it in-house. You know, it's not that Parks and Rec doesn't have enough to do. It's not that Public Works doesn't have enough to do. They're willing to try and work with the Board of Selectmen and do what you've asked of them.
And Kate, you can confirm that, you know, if this goes to Park and Rec, they will treat it like any other facility on their list in terms of priority and regular maintenance and making sure that they show up when they have agreed to and they have a regular schedule to, to do whatever the regularly scheduled items are.
Absolutely. And I'll tell you, Jim Flynn, when he takes something on, he does it with pride and to the best of his ability. He, you know, if he can't do it and do it well, he's going to tell you. Because he, he doesn't like to do a job halfway.
Then can I just push on that point just to make sure that in your conversations with the departments, that I as a board member am not asking the Park and Rec to do this. I just want to be very clear that they would say no if they were not comfortable.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just really want to push that point. And, and, you know, Public Works, okay. That's okay if they say no.
Yeah.
Not a reflection on them by any means. They've watched it.
No.
Okay.
I would fully expect that there would be an ongoing dialogue too between Parks and Rec and the Fire Commission, to really detail the needs and the timing thereof. So hope they can work together. And just to acknowledge that there won't be a resulting increased budget need in Parks and Recreation to accommodate this. They are going to accommodate with your current or proposed appropriation. Okay. I'd really like to give it a try too. It's town-owned property that we are allowing for the Drill Tower to be there, which is a phenomenal service to our firefighters, to have a great training facility. So I know it's a change, but I'd like to give it a try for a year. And if it works great, if it doesn't, then we'll reverse course for the future. Okay, so I think that we have, well, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the cutting $7,500 from the Fire Commission's budget for maintenance of the fire training facility, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Krista, are you an aye?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought you were looking for a motion. So yes, no, I am an aye.
You know what? You're right. I didn't, I didn't do the motion in seconds. I'll entertain a motion to approve that cut. David Moore's may have a second. Sarah's second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Kate, are you abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay, Kate abstains. Right. Okay, let's talk about the Edgerton property. I think you all have received some information from the 2006 feasibility study to give you a general overview of, of that parcel and the portions of it that would be usable in some way. And as a reminder, we're looking for some money to take down some dead trees, to do some leveling, some filling in, planting some grass so that in the near term, the general public that owns that land could better utilize it. Knowing that we are beginning our discussions on more detailed plans for how we might want to use that property as a town. So I'll open it up for board comments or additional questions on that $75,000 budget. Anybody? Sarah?
I appreciate the additional information that was sent over today. Thank you very much to Linda to send all that over. I am impressed by the number of things that could be done possibly with that property. And it's kind of exciting. There are so many things that we could maybe do with that. To that end, I, you know, I want to think very long and hard about what we can do with that property. It sounds like- you know, I want to think very long and hard about what we can do with that property. It sounds like there are so many options and I would be in favor of planning this thoughtfully. And if we need to come back to the Board of Finance and and ask for the funds. I am. I don't know that that would necessarily put this project off for a full year if we were able to come back and and speak with the Board of Finance with a thoughtful plan. I I'm hopeful that they would support it. I just don't know at this time, given the breadth of opportunities that I knew that there is an interest in cleaning it up and and I can absolutely appreciate that. I think we're just thinking more long-term.
So what I hear you are recommending a $75,000 cut to eliminate this item from the budget.
Correct. Thank you.
Other thoughts? Kate?
I'm I'm tending, even though there's not a clear plan as to how we're going to use it, which is what Sarah's saying. There's so many options that have been presented by, well, the Redness and Mead Study, for example. But I still think that maybe this work, just getting a property kind of, if you will, prepared, makes some sense because there's something has to be done with the property anyway. Very steep, as David has pointed out when he looked at it. And it parts very steep. And you got to remove some of the asphalt services anyway. I'm kind of well-torn. I kind of feel this is a worthwhile expenditure to get us ready for the next tougher decision as to what, how exactly are we going to use this property? Or how do we recommend that the town use the property? So I hear what Sarah says. I agree with it. But I'm sort of, I'll take the point of view, maybe this is a wise investment now without a lot of assurances that we know exactly where we're going with this, which may sound strange, but that's where I am at.
Krista?
Again, I I'm going to support keeping this in the budget. Not that I
Oh, you muted yourself, Krista.
Sorry. Not I'm going to support keeping this in the budget. I don't disagree at all with what Sarah.
Pretty soon.
Sorry, Kate, you're not on mute. Kate, you, there you go. Go ahead, Krista.
That I'd like to see this, I'd like to see the town start moving to make this property at least safe to walk on at a minimum. And we're also looking for a, the window is, you know, quite a bit of time from now when this could project could actually be done. So I'm voting to keep it in. And let's get something going and continue discussions actively as to how we can find a good purpose for it.
David?
I think like some of the, some of the other board members, I struggle with this a little bit. And I think the where the rubber met the road for me is that the struggle between do we wait and try to discern the ultimate highest and best use that we will eventually finally settle on for the town, meaning the final stage for this? Or do we do something to improve the property now, knowing that the improvements we make will still ready the parcel for whatever the final use may be? And maybe the, maybe the converting it to green space is the fight ultimately turns out to be the final use, right? I don't know. I know that there have, in the study, there were some other options that have been discussed. And maybe those will still be on the table at some future point. But right now, the property is clearly unusable and the maps that you wrote, that were in the back of the Redness and Mead Study, particularly Exhibit 33, show the area that I think we're referring to as to be sort of cleaned up, graded out, planted, those types of things, preserving the watershed area and leaving the steepest sections alone. So for now, I think it's a good idea to go ahead and proceed and leave it in.
Okay, thank you. Then why don't we take a vote on? I guess the vote will be to support the $75,000 budget line item for some improvements to the Edgerton property. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that. Krista moves. May I have a second? Kate, seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, opposed? Sarah, are you voting?
You know, if the it's difficult. I, I, I understand both sides. I genuinely do. You know, I absolutely do. If the, if the board feels that this is a thoughtful, you know, way to proceed, then then we should do this. I'm certainly not going to stand in anyone's way or.
Is that a yay vote?
Sure, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's very nice. Okay. Terrific. And then last that I have on my list here is a grant to the Historical Society for $10,000, which we funded for a couple of years. But it is a large amount for a grant and the grant largely goes to support operating expenses to help protect the historic documents that belong to the town. Thoughts? I think I'd like, I think I'll start here and I think I'd like to recommend a reduction in this grant amount this year of $2,000. So fund it at $8,000. And, you know, continue to work with the Historical Society about this grant. I strongly support the work of the Historical Society. We have an amazing town that is very historic. So the work they do is fantastic. The work they do educating our schoolchildren about Darien's history is wonderful. And one question that I don't know the answer to currently, but I don't believe that the school participates financially with the Historical Society. So that's an open item I'd like to look further into. So I think I'm recommending to you, if you would agree, a modest reduction in the grant this year. Go ahead, Kate. I saw your hand first, sorry.
It would be nice if we had them come in, in like a November and explain to us what they've done in the past year and what they propose to do going into the following year. It would be helpful for our budget deliberations.
I agree. I agree.
As they came in that one year.
Yep. Sarah?
I'd like to see some supporting documentation. When we pushed back last year, I believe they were able to provide us with some budget information, but what they provided with us this year is is less than we received last year. And I would like to see, you know, more information. What are they exactly doing with it? It's the same kind of request every year.
Great. I agree.
So one of the mitigating factors certainly to be discussed is the the large role that the Historical Society has played in the bicentennial. You know, all the work that they did to prepare for 2020, that now has to be moved in hopefully 2021. So, you know, I just, I just add that as, you know, a mitigating factor if anybody's compelled to continue to evidence our support for the great work by fully funding the grant. I'm open to that discussion. Krista?
Yeah, my inclination was to keep it at 10. I guess because I'm concerned as to what happens if we do cut the two? How does that affect their operations? But I would strongly hope that they do appear, all our grant recipients, as the library clearly does, is very active in their presentation. But the depot, library, kids in crisis, anybody with whom we're going to consider issuing a grant, still working on the more of a formalized grant agreement, but they need to be before us with information, not coming down the 11th wire like this is. But I think the support, especially next year, going into the bicentennial or celebration next year, I'd like to keep it at 10.
David, do you have a viewpoint?
Definitely would like to keep it in the budget. I don't have a strong view on eight versus 10.
All right. So let's take a vote on funding and fully funding the grant request of $10,000. May I have a motion? Minister moves. May I have a second? Kate, seconds? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Sarah, sorry, what's your vote, Sarah? Oh, thank you, David.
I wish we had had more information from them. I don't know if you want to categorize that as an abstention or an opposed, but I do wish we had had more information from them.
Okay. We, you know, it's become very clear that our grant recipients, there has to be a more detailed, formalized process of asking for grants, accounting for grants, entering into grant agreements. So I'm glad, I'm glad we're moving in that direction, which hopefully will be corrected by the next budget.
Yes, Krista, thank you for your work on that with Kate. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I continue to want to work with Kate more on that. So we really have a cleaner process for next year. I think it's important.
So Krista, just two cents, Krista. Given that the budget process, you know, starts towards the back half of the year, if we could maybe start seeing the different grantees come in through the September, October window to give us an update on their operations, that would give us some background and color before we see their budget number. If that's possible. But I know, Kate, we always have a very busy schedule, so I'm not sure how that would work.
Well, you know, I think in the draft of the what I think should be in grant agreements, they should be coming in after their fiscal year is completed so that they can give you an update on how they spent the money. So I think it might vary. You might end up staggering them. But that's going to be your choice if you want to have them all in a certain timeframe. Just some data might be more, more current than others, depending on when you do it.
No, that makes some sense to go out after their fiscal year.
Kate, do you do outreach to people that receive grants in preparation for the budget?
Yes. We do it when we start the budget, when we start having department heads working on their budget. We send anybody who's gotten a grant in the past gets a form that they need to complete, an application that they need to complete and send in to us that actually they're in the OpenGov and they're reminded that we need to see their financials at that same time.
Is that November?
It's November, December. It's in November because they're due in December.
So maybe for grant recipients, we could make that earlier.
Sure.
And as part of their grant request process, we request they come before the Board of Selectmen.
Clearly, they should be reporting as to what they've done with the money. That'd be helpful.
Okay, so I think that was four yeas and an abstention. That's fine. May that motion carries. I think that those are all the modifications that we were planning to make. One thing I just want to confirm because I, I know that we had Kira from the library on the call. I don't know if she's still here, but
Yes.
While, while we have reduced our COVID expenditures by 75%, I'd like to make sure that we leave the library's budget intact. She sent us a memo outlining that rationale. I think that we should just leave their, their budget as proposed. I don't think we were planning to cut their COVID expenditures anyway, but I just wanted to acknowledge that publicly. Is that correct?
We did have a reduction of 75% for them, which was $4,500.
I'm sorry, did that email go out today? From Kara?
Kate and I received this email the end of last week.
Oh.
Would you like, I can read it to you right now.
I'm sorry, did everyone get the?
I don't know.
No, I don't think so. I don't think we forwarded it to you. So that's, that's our boundary.
No, 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 that's fine. Because I was assuming that they would operate the same way as the other town departments. So what is the case for not having them?
So let me read what Kira provided. She says, "In our budget spreadsheet, line 24, the $6,000 is not an addition of funds for COVID over the previous fiscal year. It's simply a redistribution of the funds that are typically in office supplies, line 22, and the building and cleaning supplies, line 23. We found that because we were open for fewer public hours and seeing less foot traffic in the building due to COVID, we were not spending as much as we usually do on things like copy or paper and ink and other supplies. We accounted for that shift in the adjusted budget for the current year, preserving $9,600 from those lines to support our COVID-specific purchases. That's how we've been able to stay within the approved budget despite the challenges of unexpected COVID expenditures. For next year's proposed budget, we're doing the same. The total dollar amount remains status quo, but we've estimated that we'll continue to see a slight dip in things like copy or paper and ink, enabling us to reserve at least $6,000 for COVID supplies like masks, hand sanitizer and the like. As we return to normal, we'll eliminate that COVID line and those funds will once again be needed in our usual lines." So they're shifting money around. They didn't add money to their budget for COVID expenditures is the bottom. Sarah?
I support their full budget.
I'm not sure Kira's still here, David.
Yeah, she is.
Okay.
She's on the chat. I, I asked her if she could turn on her camera, but I've not seen her pop in yet.
She is here and willing to answer questions.
Maybe just unmute yourself, Kira?
Oh, she must have popped out and back in.
Hi, everyone. This is Kira. Sorry. I was driving, so I had to pull over. I'm happy to answer any questions, though, about, about that budget line and, and how that breaks down.
So Kara, this is David Martin. If I understand your, your message to Jamie and Kate, basically, the monies that are, much of the monies that are in the COVID line item currently are basically a redistribution of other expenses that you would have had on a different line item in a normal operating year.
Right, right. So, so we have a couple of lines for supplies, office supplies and, and building, building and basically janitorial supply lines. And I think I forgot the exact number, but let's, you know, whatever it is, 46,000 for the year for all of those, those two supply lines has remained status quo. So we didn't, we didn't add to those lines over last fiscal year. We just realized that we were spending less in things like copy, paper and ink and said, okay, well, let's make sure we're allocating what we're not spending on copy, paper and ink to masks and hand sanitizer and additional cleaners. So yeah, it's a, it's a status quo budget as far as library supplies. We just earmarked some of that funding specifically to support COVID.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I really appreciate that thinking. And we would fully anticipate that as the year goes on, the library will have more normalized operations. And so those dollars will likely ship back to normal operating supplies.
Yes, that's, that's our hope as well.
Thank you, Kira.
Thank you.
So in that case, we will, that, is that an add-back, Jen?
Yes, it is.
Okay, remind us of that amount, please.
$4,500.
$4,500.
I'm sorry, can we ask, how is this number for supplies compared to prior year then? Just curious. I understand the anomaly from last, from what we've had in the last year. But how does this compare then to the prior year, which was a more normal year?
This is Kira again. So, so our overall supplies, office, janitorial, building supplies is status quo. So, so if you look at the, the, the budget from last year, actually for the last, I think, four years, all of those lines have remained status quo, and that's what we put in for the proposal as well.
Okay, let's see the 1920. Okay. I'm fine with accepting the budget as presented by the library then.
Thank you. I am too. Kip and David?
Yes.
Good.
Great, okay. Thank you. Those were all the changes that I've identified. Is there anything else from the board, from Kate and Jen?
I have nothing else. Looks like Sarah does.
I just want to clarify that in addition to the contribution for the fire truck, I'm not stating this right, the capital contribution for the fires are, are we also suggesting that we do bonding for some of the projects for Public Works? Or no?
There were two projects, the tennis courts at Cherry Lawn that you added back, and then sidewalks that didn't cut from the budget, but your note, the notes were that you were recommending to the Board of Finance that they fund them through bonding.
Okay. So is that a question? We just wait to hear back from them on that? Or we put that in the budget? How do we?
Well, you have it in the budget.
Right.
Which is a different story than what you were doing with the fire apparatus replacement.
Thank you, yes.
So.
We approve them, and then when I deliver our budget proposal to the Board of Finance as part of that message, we send a recommendation of what was the thing that they were.
Thank you.
Or, or fund with alternate funding, I should say that. They could choose to pay for sidewalks or tennis courts out of general funds or everything. So. Okay. So I think that we are in need of some final numbers. Kate and Jen, do you need some time to noodle on that? Or are you ready to give us numbers for our resolution page?
I'm ready. I have the numbers available. Mail's out. So does everyone have the resolution? Do you want me to just kind of fill in the blanks?
I can pop it up on, or maybe I don't have it open. I emailed it out to you all on Thursday, but if you need, I can put it up on the screen.
I think it's important for the public that we state it such so anyone watching this after the fact understands the big picture.
Yep, just give me a second. Oops, wrong screen, sorry. Screen of monitor two, share. Okay, there we go. So go ahead, Jen.
So general operating fund is 35-946-735. And just tell me when you're ready, because I'm in a different screen and I can't see what you're doing.
Okay, debt service? Transfers out? Total general fund? Okay, sewer operating? Parking operating? $8,24,665?
Right.
Capital? Sewer capital? Parking capital?
Okay. I'll just read the brief resolution. I'm not going to read all those numbers again. Whereas the Board of Selectmen have reviewed and evaluated the town administrators' proposed budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022, and the six-year capital plan. And following the completion of this review, a number of changes and modifications have been made to the budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the town Darien or Selectmen hereby approve the modified annual budget for 2021, 2022, and the six-year capital plan. Be it further resolved that the 2021, 2022 budget and six-year capital plan be submitted to the Board of Finance for their consideration. And the budget is as reflected in the document you see before you and the numbers reported from our Director of Finance. Does anyone have any questions before we take a vote on that? Or comments? Krista?
Just a follow-up. If there, when you have the update on the police fire server, which is a cut to be determined, just let us know.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? No, I just want to, Kip, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay. I just want to thank all of you. I think that we went through the right process. We determined what town services the Board of Selectmen believes are necessary to meet the needs and expectations of the taxpayers. So I want to thank you. I thought it was a very smooth process. I don't know about you guys, but I thought using OpenGov was great. Loved having all that detail right at Kate and Jen's fingertips and ours when we went home to review. Hopefully, some members of the Board of Finance, Finance and Budget, or even the public, RTM members also have taken an opportunity to go online to look at OpenGov and see how powerful a budget tool really is. So I want to thank you. I want to thank Kate and Jen for their hard work. And thank also Board of Finance and Finance and Budget members for following us all along the way and offering your comments and questions. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen budget resolution.
Sarah moved.
Sarah moves. Kip seconds. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, great. Thanks so much. All right, moving on to other business then. Discuss and take action on a request to transfer $8,000 to planning and zoning overtime. Kate, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, sure. Just get it in front of me. In order to run their board meetings in the pandemic world, they've been using GoToMeeting, as have we. they've utilized one of the employees to manage the meetings in the same way that I manage yours. He's a union employee, and union employees have the option to choose overtime or comp time. And he has chosen to take overtime. On the other hand, they have saved because they have not needed to have a stenographer present at these meetings. So the proposal is to take the funds from clerical services, which will come in under budget, and transfer them to overtime to cover the costs.
Okay, any questions about the transfer? Krista?
Less about the transfer itself, I think. No issue whatsoever. More about procedure going forward. Is this a a plan that we could utilize going forward?
Not sure I know what you mean by the plan.
If Channel 79 taped it, that it could be utilized instead of a stenographer?
I, I don't. I would have to ask Jeremy that. I don't have the answer to that.
That's not a question addressing the transfer, but more of a, if it's continue to save us money going forward, I would certainly support the practice.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Kip. Do you have a second? Sarah, a second? Or did you have a question, Sarah? Was that a second or?
No, I seconded. Yes, second, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thanks very much. Okay. We have meeting minutes of our regular meeting of January 19. Any corrections?
Yep.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Kip. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Sorry, I had Sarah's hand was up before I heard David speak. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Kate, are there any public comments for tonight?
I did not receive any.
Agenda review. Krista?
And just a, some follow-up, or one follow-up, the pickleball court. Figure out where are we with that? Just an update.
Sure, they, they put together bid specs for the conversation at your last meeting, which include the, the statement that, you know, it won't go forward unless there's funding available for it. But that will give you a better cost estimate, knowledge of what needs to be raised, what the project would cost.
Anything else? Sarah, you had a comment before?
Oh, um, I think, Kate, you've got back the charter review back on the schedule for the next meeting, no, yes? Kate, you're on mute.
All right, I didn't want you to hear me typing into the minutes. I'm, I don't want to put it on the next meeting because there's an RTM meeting that night.
Okay.
So I'd rather keep your agenda short because we've got a couple, those special appropriations. And I usually have to be in on the RTM meeting. So how about March?
We'll move it to March, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Krista?
Is there any way, which I was just looking at our agenda and the public, is there a way in which we can have the public participate in another manner, other than emailing you by the day before? I just thought we could make it a little bit more user-friendly for the public to participate?
That's entirely up to you. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 members of the public here now. I mean, I think they're mostly RTM members, but, you know, public can join the meeting. And if you want to let them make comments at the appropriate time, that's up to you, up to the board.
That would be my thought. We can put on an agenda for our next meeting. Or I just, it reads as if they have to, I read it, that they have to comment by the day before. So just to make it clear that they can participate in these meetings if this is the format for the foreseeable future we'll be in. Or open for discussion.
So let's put it as a discussion item on our next meeting agenda so then we can discuss it fully and take a board vote on that and not oppose to that. Anything else? Okay, if not, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Sarah moves. Do you have a second?
Second.
David seconds. All those in favor say aye.
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 Great, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.